Okay, I'll call the order. The January 2nd, 2019 Regular Meeting for the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first thing we'll do is our Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, I'm going to ask our Chaplain, Reverend Patrick Womack, to come forward and give our invocation. So if everyone would rise for the pledge, please.
Almighty God, our Father, as we bow before you on this evening, we thank you for your glorious blessings of life and for the opportunity for these gathered to conduct the people's business. We ask you, oh Lord, to grant these our commissioners wisdom and discernment, but we pray also that you will give them a sense of relief from the burdens they carry, from their personal lives to their work, that they may come to this place and experience the leading of your Spirit to make decisions that will lead to the betterment of our county and will prove to be the best of leadership. Bless this county, we pray. From Balsam Gap to Betsy's Gap, from Beach Gap to below Big Bend, may everything in between be peopled with those who will be determined in our hearts to love our neighbors as we love ourselves. And as our nation has observed the holiday as of yesterday, we remember the one who taught us from a Birmingham jail and from the steps of one of our greatest memorials, that freedom matters and should be granted to all people regardless of race or ethnicity, origin or background. May indeed we be a people who can say before you, "Thanks be to God, we are free at last." For we pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Womack, and I just want to say that Reverend Womack does this on his own time, and we appreciate him coming up and being able to do that for all our meetings, so we appreciate that Reverend Womack. And our first order of business will be a public hearing for economic grant incentives per NCGS 158 7.1C. And the first, there'll be two, two public hearings for, and the first will be on 11th Hour Brewing and the second is for Evergreen Packaging. And I will open up the first public hearing and David will start the presentation. Okay, Dave?
Good evening Commissioners. As Chairman Inslee said, two public hearings this evening on economic incentives. First one is 11th Hour Brewing. I just want to touch base about how we got here with the incentives. Back in November 2017, after review from the Economic Development Council, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners passed a new Haywood County incentive for business and industry. And part of those incentives were a new tier of incentives that expanding our small businesses could get into, you know, the how to help small and expanding businesses. That's why we created this tier, because before it was for large businesses moving in, over $3 million investment with five to 10 jobs there. So we lowered those tiers to help small and expanding businesses here in Haywood County. So, let's review that. Business may qualify for the financial incentive grant based upon the actual value, schedule, and payment of local property taxes for a period up to five consecutive years. Annual total property taxes due must be paid in full. A portion of the property taxes paid each year up to five consecutive years will be returned to the business. 11th Hour Brewing LLC. This is a business that former County Manager Ira Dove and I sat back and discussed this with back in the summer of 2017, when we're trying to model and craft, you know, how we're moving this small business expansion forward. And this is one of the businesses that we worked with along. So 11th Hour Brewing is the parent company of Boojum. It's a, opened in January 2015. The idea was hatched by owners Kelsey and Ben Baker, brother and sister, in 2015 when they discovered they had a mutual love of home brewing. Family ties brought the Bakers to Waynesville, North Carolina, along with their parents, Corin and Woody, and they began working towards their goal of opening their own brewery. They started with a few beers in a garage from the enjoyment of family and friends and now grown into a 9,000 square foot facility located in Dayton Drive. It generates 3,500 barrels of beer per year for western North Carolina. The brewery serves over 200,000 customers who's annually visit Boojum's downtown taproom and bar. The response from customers in the Waynesville community has been incredible, and the Bakers remain focused on maintaining a close-knit group of passionate, hard-working employees who strive to create the highest quality, best tasting beer possible. Their hope is for Boojum Company to continue to generate others to stay and explore in Waynesville and Haywood County. So they have done a tremendous job and have become good community partners. Just want to make sure that what we're talking about is the manufacturing facility out at Dayton Drive has nothing to do with the taproom and the taproom here on Main Street. It's just the production and the manufacturing of, not the restaurant itself, okay? And so, based on our guidelines, 11th Hour Brewing has made an investment of $967,000, hired four new salaried employees between $32,000 and $55,000, and hired three new hourly employees beginning at $10 to $17 an hour. And since we began this, they've added two more positions down at the manufacturing facility. So that's good. So as for the incentive guidelines, how this would work, $500,000 to nearly $3 million and add five to nine jobs would be 40% return on the taxes. They pay, 11th Hour pays $1.6 million, pays on a value of $1.6 million. So this is just, as I said, for the Dayton Drive, which generates a personal property bill of $5,662, and 40% of that would be granted back in the amount of $2,264.81. So that's how they grant it. They have to pay the taxes first. There's a checkoff sheet that we have, that we use, where we verify the number of employees and the hourly wages that those employees make there. So that's the checkoff there. We've seen the investment, they're paying taxes on that investment. So that's the checks and balances of this. And what we present to the board is a formal agreement that will outline all that as well at the next meeting if, for approval. Okay? CC, have anything to add?
I'll wait till then. Was it finished with all of it? Okay. I thought you had more to do. Okay, I just wanted to, on behalf of the Chamber Board of Directors and the Economic Development Council, I want to thank you for your careful consideration, thoughtful consideration of this particular project. I think this industry has added a lot to Haywood County. It is one of our growing industries in North Carolina as well. So I thank you for that.
Okay. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions before we start? Okay. At this time, I will open for public comment on this issue. If you do come forward to speak, make sure you're speaking to the mic, because we can hear you better. And it can, these are also taped, and so it can be better heard on your television. So at this time, I will ask, and you'll have three minutes to make public comments. So at this time, does anyone want to come forward and comment on this incentive? We're going to have three comment periods, so there'll be two on the incentives, and then there'll be one, a regular public comment. So does anybody want to comment on this incentive package at this time? Okay, CC, now I'll close the public hearing, and I will proceed with the second. David?
The owners of Boojum Brewing and 11th Hour here. Kelsey?
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Dr. Anderson. Okay. Next public hearing is Evergreen Packaging. Back in 2014, the county agreed to participate in the jobs maintenance grant, okay? So this was outside the incentive agreement. This was a special agreement that we made with the Department of Commerce, and so this doesn't apply to the guidelines here. It's a different contract that we had with the state. Just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that, because this incentive grant went past that. But what's kind of interesting as well is that here is 11th Hour, started in 2013, up and running in 2015. And now here's a business that's been a part of Haywood County since the early 1900s. And then, you know, we see both of these businesses growing and flourishing in Haywood County, and it's nice to be a part of that, both businesses, and working with them to make sure our citizens have a great place to work and live. So just to tell you the economic impact of Evergreen. Currently employs 1,230 employees with an average salary of $70,000, hiring about 50 new employees each year to keep up with retirements. Pays over $2.1 million in taxes to Haywood County and the town of Canton. Spends $500 million in wages, materials, energy, and transportation. It was the 2018 Haywood County Chamber Business of the Year. So this agreement was for the boiler, or transferring the boilers out to natural gas and the, let's just flip my paper here, can't see today. Since Evergreen Packaging, the North Carolina Department of Commerce entered the jobs maintenance and capital development agreement on December 19th, 2014. This agreement stated that Evergreen Packaging would provide an investment of $50 million to enhance Evergreen's pollution controls and meet several criteria for job retention and wage standards for Canton, for the Canton, North Carolina facility. An initial investment of $17.5 was made in 2016, and an additional investment of $1.9 was made in 2017 for a current total investment of $19,510,000. Currently, Evergreen Packaging employs, again, 1,230 employees, meeting the 800 minimum standard to receive the JMAC grant through the state. So their investment looks like this. They made the $1.9 million investment, they maintained the 800 employees, they have to maintain that, they've made that investment of $50 million over five years. And again, this JMAC grant, we started back in 2017. The prior board made a similar approval of this for $17.3 million. The county agreed up to $20 million for, to incremental tax rebate back to Evergreen. So what that looks like for their tax bill from what was previously generated was, on this will be $107,000 with a 50% grant back of $53,000, $54,000. So that's how that worked, but that'll go through 2024. This agreement started in December of 14. It was for a 10-year agreement, and then we agreed to match that 10 years as well for that. So we'll be granting that back. We have the prior grant from last year, and then currently this grant, so there'll be two grants backed for those. And I have those numbers from last year if you need those as well.
Okay. Is any of the, are you done? You finished? Okay, any Commissioners have any questions on this? Okay. Okay, at this time, I will open now for public comment on the Evergreen Packaging. Does anyone want to come forward and comment? Okay. Seeing the one, I'll close public comment for this. And we'll be voting on this at our next meeting. We don't vote on this tonight, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have our public comment session, and I have two people signed up, and if anyone is present that would like to speak after they speak, that would be okay. And just limit your comments to three minutes, and our first person to speak will be Jean Paris.
Thank you, Haywood County Commissioners. I'm glad to be here. I feel like we're old friends seeing that I managed to get my face in here every few months. Today I come to ask you to really pay attention to Canton on February 6th, to, you have a letter that says that there will be a program about the drug situation in Canton, which, if you read the paper, is fairly significant. We have more representation on this board from Canton address, Bethel, where they live, but we are very glad that they're here, and we hope they will do a lot to represent Canton, because I know Brandon's business is in Canton, so, and I don't know you at all, Mark, but we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
And, but I want you, all five of you, to be at this program. I want you to show your support for the town of Canton and your support for the drug problems. And I know that Tommy and Brandon both use that as part of what they were running for is to help with the drug program. So this is a way to help, to let the people in Canton know that you support them and that you want to help them rid their town of drugs, just like you do Waynesville. And I know you care about me and you support me, and I come to Waynesville, but you all don't come to Canton very much. And I've tried several times getting Brandon to the program, and he promised me that he could be there, and if something would happen, then he wouldn't be there. But I want y'all to put a high priority on it this time and let people in Canton know that you support this and that you want to help in any way possible. Now, I would also like to tell you that we will know if you're not there, because you're going to have reserved seats. So, I'm going to be counting, and it's off, I can still count to five. So, thank you guys, and I appreciate you. And I just want, if you've not read your letter, please read it, and Greg Christopher is going to be our one speaker, and he is going to talk about what is happening around the Canton area, and that will include Bethel. And so, you do need, if you haven't heard all this information, you do need to have it and know about it and see if there's anything you can do as Commissioners to at least show your support, or go with the 300 guys to pray, or whatever, you know, you can work out with the Sheriff's Department or with the town of Canton. And we have a wonderful police chief, and there's more been doing, he has been doing more about the drug situation. There was a bust this weekend, and so they have really been shutting down on drugs in Canton. And I'd like to see that happen in Maggie Valley and in Clyde, and they have been invited to this program. So hopefully their boards will be there, as well as Canton's board. So we'll see, and I hope we'll see you there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Paris. And that is on Wednesday, February 6th, at 6:30 at the Canton First Baptist Church, which is at 74 Academy Street in Canton. So, appreciate if everybody needs to be informed on that. Okay, our next speaker will be Linda Bennett.
Hello, I'm Linda Bennett from Maggie Valley, and I want to take this time to speak to the county, about the county attorney position. And I want to make sure that y'all understand I'm not referencing any specific person or any individual. It's just, I'm speaking about the process in general. I'm not sure whether the job opening for county attorney was publicly posted or not, but as an equal opportunity employer, there's an implied responsibility to abide by the anti-discrimination laws of the federal, state, and local levels, which often require that employers offer equal opportunity to job seekers. That being said, I would be disappointed if the position was not publicly posted, and I hope that it will be openly posted soon if it was not, so that all interested parties will have the equal opportunity to apply and be considered for the position of Haywood County Attorney. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Bennett. Okay, would anyone else like to speak, to come forward? Okay. Okay, I'll close public comment at this time. Okay, we'll move to constituent concerns. See, Mark, you have any?
Yeah, I've had several people call about the same thing that Linda was talking about. I don't know the proper procedure, what they were asking, I don't really know how to respond to them.
Okay.
Is there something you could outline that I could say? I mean...
Well, the county attorney serves at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners, so we basically hire and fire him, so. You have any comment on that, Kirk?
No, I mean, that's, it's not a job that has to be posted. I guess we could have agreed to post it, but in the interest of time, which we had some time constraints on that, that was the position and the person that we chose as a group. And I suppose we could face criticism and opposition to any decision we make, so, and I'm not certain if that's what that was, or if there's just an intent for it to be advertised to the public. But on a particular day, we need to have an attorney sitting in that position when we have a board meeting. And we had a board meeting, the first meeting in January, and so it did not give us a great deal of time to go out and look for attorneys. And we feel confident when we chose Mr. Queen, that he has the requirements and capability to serve us for a period of time. But Kevin's correct, is that he serves at the pleasure of the board, and that means we can hire and fire as we so choose, and that is the law of North Carolina as well, that you can hire and fire as you so choose.
Did you have any other constituent concerns?
No, I just, I don't have any idea what to tell people.
Okay, yeah, it's okay. Did you have any, Kirk?
I don't have any constituent concerns. I don't know that I'll be able to make it. I want to go ahead and say that, since we've been put on the spot on this particular day. It is Wednesday night, and we do have church, I mean, most people have church if they're in the Baptist church on Wednesday nights, and I actually sing in the choir, and we have choir practice, so I don't know that I'll make the drugs in the midst. I think we've shown the County Commissioners our support for the fight against drugs in Haywood County and recognize the problem, and certainly want to support the sheriff in the fight against that problem. And we've actually also instituted a lawsuit. The lawsuit has been filed against the drug manufacturers, and so we're pursuing that as well, and so if I cannot make it that night, that is why.
Okay. Brandon, do you have any?
Yes, I do. I've got one, but I think we're going to add it to our next meeting agenda. So I'll have it added for that.
Okay. How about you, Tommy?
I had a couple. Since this has been videotaped, I think this issue's come up before with some of the other Commissioners, but I got a call about our local high schools and middle schools. They have a shooting club. Some of you may be familiar with that. And they have trouble finding property to shoot on. They, you know, for various reasons, because of the weather, they can't park the vehicles, or there's complaints from neighbors. But anyway, they're in a need, they're in need right now, so if any of you guys have a piece of property, I know I've talked with Kirk, the gentleman that called me, said that his family had some property, he had talked to Kirk about it previously, and then I've discovered that some of the other Commissioners have been asked also prior to this. So, again, there's a community need, and I'm putting this out there in case somebody has some remote property that, like these kids, the guys do a good job with hunter safety and gun safety and things that nature. It's a good community project, so I'm putting that out there to help them. If you know of anybody, call me or call Ms. Way, and she can get the word to us. Also, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for sending me to the Legislative Goals Conference down in Raleigh. I had a very good, productive conference in two days, and I would like to tell Ms. Paris that we passed on 26 legislative goals, and we ranked the top five, each individual did. My top five came out of the Health and Human Services Committee. My number one goal was a bill that supported this drug issue we're faced with all over the state, and that was my number one ranking that got turned in, and then it was overall. Also, number two, which was overall number one, but due to our county's needs with the opioid crisis, I put that as the number one goal for our county. But broadband, broadband internet service, that was my number two goal. I noticed the other night some other organizations have that high on their list, and, but I appreciate the opportunity to represent us, and we'll get with our legislative delegation and talk to these folks and see if they can get something pushed through for us. We can make recommendations on the county level, and all 100 counties in North Carolina was invited, I think 87 showed up, but I think all the counties in North Carolina, they should listen, and we can push, and then they'll try to deviate the money in Raleigh. And that's basically what it amounts to. They've got a pot of money, and they meet and try to deviate out however they see fit as far as the needs go. So, again, thank you for allowing me to do that for the county.
Okay, thank you, Tommy. On the opioid, I did want to say that, I'm having, I asked Brian, if he would, to put on in our work session to talk about that, the opioid, and particularly the money that we're getting from the sale of the hospital will be put into a, what is that, a trust, Kirk? Is that what? And we're hoping to use the interest off of that, the money in that trust, which will be close to $20 million. So the interest off that trust, we're going to use for health education programs, and I think the opioid would be a very good program to fund some of those programs.
Yeah, it's with the Haywood Health Foundation the money is. And then the interest that accrues off of the principal is available for grants.
Correct.
And so if there is a group or an entity that was, could assist in the opioid epidemic or in the defense of that, or the treatment of people, I'm sure that they could apply to the Haywood Health Foundation for a grant for that purpose.
Okay, yeah.
And then it goes before a board, and that board determines, you know, whether it should be granted or not.
And I would imagine that would be a high priority for them, so. So we, I want to look into that and see when, maybe when that will start. Do you know when it might start?
I do not, no.
Yeah. I'd like first to maybe talk about that a little bit, so, and on that. And the county attorney, Frank was asked, he was qualified, and in Haywood County, there are a lot of, there are several attorneys, but very few are qualified, and Frank had the qualifications, and I felt like he was the best fit. That's my opinion, to help us out, and I appreciate Frank doing that on short notice for sure, so. Okay. Now, under administrative agency reports, there, I don't really have any tonight, so I'm going to move on to the discussion adjustment to the agenda, and what I'd like to do is add a request. We have a request from Haywood Waterways Association for the county to consider becoming a sponsor of the annual Polar Plunge fundraiser on February 2nd at Lake Junealeska. And I'd like to add this as item number nine, and if we do add it as item number nine, we'll need to vote. It would be that the Polar Plunge supports environmental education work, including the Kids in the Creek Program, and they work with the towns and the Haywood County agencies on various education and water quality restoration projects. And all of the counties municipalities are sponsors for the amount of between $200 and $500. So what I'd like to do is add this to the agenda, and it would be item number nine under new business, if I can, if someone would make a motion to do that.
I'll move to do that.
Okay, okay. Okay, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, we'll add that and make that item number nine under new business. Okay, we'll start our consent agenda, and I'll request approval of the January 7th, 2019 Regular Meeting Minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections or additions to those? Okay. Okay, I'd like to get the request approval of the December 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. We have our tax assessor Judy Hickman here for that. Welcome, Judy.
Good evening. Apologize, I have a little bit of laryngitis. I'm requesting approval of the December 2018 releases, refunds, adjustments, and discoveries. Due to a change in our current software system, the only refunds that are issued on the assessor's side or processed on the assessor's side, excuse me, is through NCVTS, which is our tag and tax. All other refunds will be reported by the tax collector.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Judy? Okay, thank you, Judy. Okay, next will be request approval of the December 2018 tax collections, updates, and refunds, tax, our tax collector Greg West. Welcome, Greg.
Good evening Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I would like to give a report here on the December collections. We are at 71.79%, which is $28,551,859.06. As you can see, it's quite a bit difference between 2018 and 2017. So it was really, made me curious as to why that may be, and I think Mr. Queen elaborated on it just a little bit last time. And I think Mr. Queen elaborated on it just a little bit last time, that some of the tax people being able to report on their taxes are a little bit different this year. So we really had a, in January, we really were really busy. And so I went back and looked at what our collection was as of January 31st, 2018. The office had collected $36,99,738.82, which was a 91.63%. So we went back this morning and ran an up-to-date report as of January 22nd, 10:00 a.m. we had collected $35,826,287.65, which is 90.5%. So you can see that we really made a big difference in January. It seemed like most people just waited this year to pay in January rather than in December, which was kind of unique. We really didn't have any long lines this year. I think the longest we had maybe was on a Thursday, the 27th, maybe 20 people standing in line. Seemed like most people paid via the lockbox, credit cards over the telephone, sending in the payments. So between the $36 million that was collected in '18 to what we've collected so far, you know, that's around $270,000 difference. And we still have eight days remaining in this month to collect. So I look, and we had a good day today as well. So I look for our percentage to be more in line with the past, or even just a little bit better. As far as delinquencies go, our delinquency right now, 1.39272691 through December 31st of 2018. We collected somewhere around $57,555 in delinquent taxes in the month of December. I'd be glad to answer any questions concerning those numbers, if you have any.
In case anybody have any questions? Or Greg? So you were down a million on this report, but it's already closed the gap to a little over 200,000.
Yes, with eight days remaining. Not, and today, we had pretty close to 100,000 today.
We talked about in our agenda meeting, I think Frank had mentioned that there's some federal tax law changes and stuff, so.
Correct.
That are, that's kind of promoting that, so, okay.
As far as the refunds that Judy mentioned that we do, we had refunds in the amount of $839.07 in the month of December. And that was basically landfill fee that the taxpayers brought in, proof that there was no one living in the property. And so we went back almost five years, I believe, on that for the refund.
Okay. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next item will be request approval of budget amendment, and our finance director, Julie Davis. I'll just let you describe it, Julie.
Okay, good evening. I have just one budget amendment for you tonight. And this is actually, though, a combination from Health and Human Services Agency, a combination of three different grants, two of them federal and one of them state, a total of $129,085. And this is for additional funding for the Energy Assistance Program in the county.
Anybody have any questions for Julie on that? Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. There's no old business. Under new business, we want to, there's a request of approval of, I'll let you do this, Lynn.
Good evening. It's request approval of Cavash Senecac as a replacement on the 28751 TDA 1% Subcommittee. Just as some background, especially for the new commissioners, our TDA tax, we collect 4% occupancy tax, and that's divided into two different funds. 3% comes directly back to the TDA for the purpose of marketing the county overall as a destination. And the additional 1% goes back to the zip code area where it's collected. And that's administered through a grant program with the TDA. So the purpose of the Subcommittee, which is a three-person Subcommittee in each of the zip codes, is to review the grants and make recommendations on those grants to the TDA Board. And the TDA Board has the final authority in awarding that money for the 1%. Chris Bates from Catalouche Ski Area had been on that 1% Subcommittee, but Chris chose not to seek another term on the TDA right now. So we had that vacancy, which is to be filled by a TDA Board member. So I put a call out to all of the Maggie Valley TDA Board members to see who would be interested in serving on that. And the only reply I received was from Cavash. So we are here tonight requesting that he be the replacement on that 1% Subcommittee.
Okay. Is anybody having questions with Lynn?
What kind of term do they serve, Lynn?
It's a two-year term. So he would fill out, the terms were appointed last year, so he would fill out the one year, this year, as the remainder of the first two-year term. And then he would be, all of the Subcommittee members are eligible to serve a maximum of three two-year terms. But they are appointed every two years.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Lynn? Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? This is a request to approve the Kivak, Kivon Act?
Cavash.
Okay. Okay. As a replacement on the 28751 TDA 1% Subcommittee, and that zip code is Maggie Valley.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The second item of new business is to request approval of a statement of work with SHI International Corporation for a Microsoft Software Implementation Project in the amount of $27,000 to be paid from budgeted funds. And we have our Assistant IT Director, Joey Webb. Hi, Joey.
Good evening. As you mentioned, we're seeking approval for a scope of work with SHI International. The scope of work should be in your agenda packets. It's to implement the Microsoft System Center, which is a piece of software that helps us, it provides several tools to help us manage all of the Microsoft products that we use. And there's a long list of those, and improves efficiencies within our department. The total is 27,000. It's coming from budgeted funds, so we're not asking for any additional funding, just the approval to get a purchase order and complete the work.
Is anybody having questions for Joey?
Is that SHI, is that your preferred vendor on work like this for the county? Or do you, I mean?
We do, we always do multiple bids. We'll ask for quotes from several different vendors. SHI just had considerably the lowest, the lowest quote on this particular implementation. We saw, I think we saw four or five separate ones as we went through the planning process. And they were almost half what some of the others were. But they were, we've used them several times. They're based out of New Jersey, but they have, they're a pretty big company. I think last year, they did about $6 billion in revenues. So they've, they've been pretty widely used throughout the United States. But they, they're very competitive in their pricing, or at least were on this particular one.
Is anybody having any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to request approval of a statement of work with SHI International Corporation for a Microsoft Software Implementation Project in the amount of $27,000. And this is being paid out of budgeted funds. So would someone make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Joey. Okay, the third item of new business is to request approval to use $4,131.41 of unauthorized substance tax money for the sheriff's office equipment. We have our chief deputy, Jeff Haynes. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, commissioners. Come before you this evening asking to make use of $4,131.41 of unauthorized substance abuse tax monies to complete a transaction and purchase needed equipment for the use and enforcement of our drug-related activities, as we discussed earlier, the opioid issue and many other issues in Haywood County. The two pieces of equipment that will be purchased with this are, one, are 10 new loophole sets of binoculars for our investigations group, which will help with the investigation of drug-related activities. And the other is, are two items of undercover covert surveillance equipment. The one being a total price of $3,595.41. And the covert surveillance equipment, $536, to total the $4,131.41. And that comes from the unauthorized substance abuse, substance abuse tax money, which is levied money off seized narcotics, illegal narcotics, from our deputies.
Is anybody having any questions for Jeff this time? Hearing none, will someone make a motion to approve the budget amendment for $4,132 from the fund balance restricted for the sheriff's office from the, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing. Request approval to use the $4,131.41 of unauthorized substance tax money for sheriff's equipment. Can, will someone make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Okay. Okay, now, get to the next, what I was reading. Okay, the next item is, item number four is to request approval of a budget amendment from the General Fund, Public Safety, and the Sheriff's Office for $4,132 from the budget, from the fund balance restricted for the sheriff's office from the unauthorized substance tax funds received. Julie Davis.
You might notice in some of the backup that there's, there was a little over 17,000, almost 18,000 that was left over at the end of last year, that we had put in restricted fund balance specifically for this program. So that's what we're taking the money from. It's the restricted portion of fund balance to cover this 4,132. We round it for the budget. That's why it's a, it doesn't have any sense in this particular calculation.
How much is in that budget right now, Julie? Is it?
Well, there was, there was 17, there was 17,921 at the end of the fiscal year. They've all, they've actually brought two budget amendments before. One was for 3,622. And another budget amendment, they had, they're using some of the revenue from the current year. So when it all shakes out, they'll probably still have a little over 11,000 left to use by the end of this year. And if it's not used, it'll roll over into next year.
Okay, okay, great. So that just keeps rolling over?
It does, unless they spend it all. If they do, then we just start over again.
And where do you get this money from, Sheriff? Where does it come from originally?
The money is actually taxes that are levied by North Carolina Revenue on seized drugs. There's a, there's a tax fee list, I guess you could say, that NC Revenue bases the amount of drugs that are seized and the type of drugs. And they're taxed in a certain amount. There are actually tax warrants that are issued upon personal property that is seized on, and the people are actually executed on a tax bill. And that money that is levied and seized off of that actually goes into this fund to be used for that, the enforcement of drug activity, laws in regards to drug activity.
So they kind of pay for it, don't they?
So, so yes, illegal activity is paying for, for legal activity, yes, sir.
Is that money all generated in Haywood County, or is that a state slush fund?
It is, it is statewide, with the exception of what we have here. It stays independent. What we, what we produce through arrests stays here. But this happens in every county, all 100 counties. But it, it's produced here and stays here, yes, sir.
The system requires you to obtain a stamp from the Department of Revenue in order to sell cannabis. And if you sell cannabis without the official state stamps on it, then you're subject to this tax, which is then collected, as the deputies described. If you were to apply for the stamps, you'd be arrested for being in possession of cannabis. But if you don't apply for the stamps, then you have to pay the tax. So you've got your choices. This is, this is an important point of free will in this country. You can pay the tax collector, or you can go to jail, or both.
Most of the time, it's both.
That works out pretty good. Okay, so, does anybody have any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment of $4,132 from the fund balance of restricted for the sheriff's office from the unauthorized substance tax funds received. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those designate by saying aye? Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that explanation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, the fifth item of new business will be to request approval of purchase of eight replacement laptops from PCN Strategies for emergency services, ambulances, in the amount of $21,689.76 to be paid from budgeted funds. And we have our emergency director, services director, deputy director, Travis Donaldson. Hi, Travis.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Again, tonight, I'm for you to request approval for purchase of eight replacement rugged laptops that our ambulance crews use to do their electronic health documentation, as well as acquire signatures from the folks that we're transporting. These are replacement of eight of 14 that we have in circulation. Expected life expectancy is four to five years. The ones that we have out there right now are about four, four and a half years old, and are starting to see some wear and tear.
And what do they, what primarily does the laptops do?
Our crews chart their medical calls on them. Everything is electronic health record for us and our system. The screens on them are special screens that allow us to capture signatures, authorizing billing, as well as transfer of care at the hospitals.
You do reporting on them as well, Travis?
Yes, that's, that's all part of that.
Which I guess that allows, if you've got an ambulance over on one end of the county, it'd allow them to stay on that end of the county to do the report.
Correct.
So that they could possibly answer a call quicker on that end, so.
It stays with them all the time, and they can, they can chart on them anywhere they're at, as long as they have them with them.
Okay.
Are you going to utilize the old ones in any way, or?
Plan is, is to pull the ones that we're placing together and see if we can make a couple of good ones to pull back into a spare and reserve, and then.
Do you have your own IT people that help you with that? Or do you, to help get Joey? I don't know where Joey went. Do you, who does your work on that stuff? You do a private contract on that?
No, IT department here in the county takes care of us.
Okay, I just wondered. Joey gave us a new case the other day, he's really, they take care of you, so.
Okay.
Did you get more than the one quote on this?
Yeah, we had, well, we'd previously worked with PCN.
Okay, I see it now.
And then I requested Lori Tomlin to check into some other vendors. She let me know that PCN was probably going to be our best bet, based on the quotes that she had obtained back. There was only a couple of dollars difference in the numbers that she had come up with.
This is part of their budgeted funds, it looks like, as well.
Yeah. It is capital outlay for us. We did budget 22,000. The amount we're requesting tonight is, the quotes for 21,689.76.
Any other questions for Travis? Okay. Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of eight replacement laptops from PCN Strategies for emergency services, ambulances, in the amount of $21,689.76 to be paid from budgeted funds.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thanks, thanks Travis.
Thank you.
Okay, the sixth item of new business is to request approval for county manager to execute documents related to the North Carolina Emergency Management Incident Management Academy the week of February 18th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll remember, at our previous meeting, we received a grant from the state so Haywood County can host this training event. There's a contract in place with Lake Junealuska for the, the housing. It's over my threshold of $20,000 to sign. This just gives me the authority to sign the contract and make a few amendments before we execute the contract for that event.
Does anyone have any questions on, on that? Okay, here none. I'll entertain a motion to request approval for the county manager to execute documents related to the North Carolina Emergency Management Incident Management Academy the week of February 18th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, item number seven is to request approval of offers to purchasing contract on behalf of Coast to Coast Group LLC for the following county-owned properties. And I'll just let you describe them, Brian.
Yes, sir, thank you. These properties were actually acquired through tax foreclosure, and I'll go through those. Parcel ending in 7847 and parcel ending in 9902, that was acquired in 2011, and it had been arrears in taxes for 10 years prior to us taking possession. Parcel 6585, we took ownership in 2012. It had been four years in arrears in taxes. Parcel 5897, we acquired in 2011. It was nine years back in taxes. Parcel 3194, we received in 2010. It was seven years delinquent. And parcel 7779, we took ownership in 2012, and it was six years in back taxes. When we first took ownership of these, there were no bidders at the, at the tax sale. Since then, the properties have been listed on our website, as is, but we've also reached out to some real estate firms and adjoining landowners. On two different occasions, we're mailed notices that we had these properties if they would like to, to bid. On our website, we have a suggested bid amount, and county policy is that the, the bid price should be that suggested bid amount, and that, that equates to what we have in legal fees. So the fees are the, the price that we're bringing you today is below those, but we've had these for quite a while. This does not mean that the price that, that's before you today is what will be accepted. We'll enter the upset bid price, we'll post it on our website, we'll also put it in the newspaper, and it will be 10-day periods where people can upset the, the bid. So you're sort of establishing the floor. We're hoping that, that through interest in, in the, the public, that, that the prices come in higher. But that's in a nutshell. We will, we will post these first thing on our website if you approve these and, and get them in the paper. Once the upset bid process is, is over, payment is due in full, and we'll bring it to you, to the agenda to approve the sale.
So did I hear you correctly in saying it? That one property, they hadn't paid any taxes on it for six years, and we took it. So I think in my head, we were running like 15 or 16 years now, we haven't received any, any taxes on one of those. Something, well, several of them.
Yeah. The, the first two parcels, 7847 and 9902, those were 10 years delinquent when we took them in 2011.
Oh, my goodness.
So it's.
So we haven't had any tax collection on those in 17 years?
Time to get them on the rolls.
And you've already tried to sell them one time already, and there was no bidders?
No bidders when it was the tax sale, and at the time we contacted the, the real estate agents and the, the landowners, there was no interest in those.
In a way, the 10-day, if somebody bids 10 days, within that 10-day window, that resets the clock, right? So it'd be another 10 days.
Yes. It can, it can be a very long process. Yes, sir.
And then it comes back to us for approval, either way?
Yes. Either way, we have a final say on whether we accept the bid or not, so. Yes, sir.
So if I understand, once this bid process starts, you just said that we get to decide at the end. It doesn't go to the last bidder automatically? When that 10-day period is gone, we still get to make another decision whether they get it or not?
You will approve, I don't want to get into Mr. Queen's territory, but you will have ultimate say so.
Yeah, I think this is different, what I'm hearing, I think this might be different than a foreclosure, where after 10 days of no upset bid, there's, it goes to whoever the, the high bidder was. I think in this situation, you keep going with these 10-day periods when people can bid on it, but then only after a 10-day period is passed and no upset, no further upset bid has been submitted, that then it's considered you close the bidding process, but I think maybe you come back for the county for the final approval. I haven't done one of these in years, so it's like that. You either have final approval, or it becomes sold to the last person who bids, that nobody upset the bid within 10 days.
That's what I'm concerned with, is if it goes to that point. Right now, some of them's 500, some of them's 1,000. You could sell conceivably a three-acre tract for $2,500.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, it's quite possible. Sometimes the, what happens is that these properties may look good on paper sometimes, and, and out there in the world, as some, my old relatives used to say, all that land is doing is keeping the sky from hitting the ground. Okay, and I mean, it's just, there's septic issues. Oftentimes, there's, sometimes you can't fit both a house and a well and a septic system and a driveway all on the same size of, of that lot. Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. And so, that, you have to look at each and every one of them, I mean, really very, very carefully before you. The fact that the brokers wouldn't take these suggests to me that, that they've got development issues.
I did take liberty looking up that general statute that's referenced in that.
Yes.
The general statute 168, Act 269.
Okay.
And the last sentence does read, Mark, for your benefit, it says that the procedure shall be repeated until no further upset bids are received, at which time the council may accept an offer.
Ah.
And sell the property to the highest bidder, and then the council may at any time reject any and all offers.
Gotcha.
That's.
That's what I thought it was. It's, it's different than a foreclosure, an actual bank foreclosure.
Yeah, or a tax foreclosure.
My goodness, if it's been sitting there 16 or 17 years, it would behoove us to, like you said.
Get it back on the tax books?
Yeah. So if anybody out there wants to buy some land, it sounds like there's going to be some possibly for sale here.
Keep the bids coming, right?
Keep the bids coming.
And, and I've looked at these, I've looked at the topo, and there's a couple of them that, you know, when you develop a piece of property, you have to grade it, and when you grade it, that's when you spend a lot of money.
Right.
You know, putting a house side in and potential. And you can put a septic on any piece of property. I mean, you go to Highlands and they're on rock cliffs, okay? If you want to, if you want to pay enough, you can do that. So, you know, that being said, it's just, you know, if it's flat and got water and sewer, you don't have much development cost. If it's one of these mountain lots that has a lot of rock, and it can get pretty expensive, you know, upwards of, of $75,000, $100,000 just in grading to get a driveway and a house pad on it. So I can understand, but a couple of these, if I wasn't a commissioner, I might be interested in them, to be honest with you. So, but then there's some of them that, we call it holding the world together, you know, that's what my guys say when they go out. That's just holding the world together out there, so.
I think you can still buy it. I think just because you're a commissioner, it doesn't keep you from purchasing these properties. No, I think so.
No, I can't, I can't, I can't. I've already checked. We were at a commissioner's school, and they said I can't, so, yeah.
As long as it's arms-length and publicly done.
No, no. If the county owns it, you're doing a contract, and you can't. But now, if it's a foreclosure, and the county doesn't own it yet, and the people still own it, and the county's foreclosing, then you can buy it because it's actually that person that's selling it. But if it's in the county hands, they said that a commissioner can't buy it because it's the county property and it's a contract, and it's a misdemeanor if you do, so.
That makes sense. But we could make an exception if you want to pay more than $1,000.
You know, land is, is like beauty. It's in eyes of the beholder, you know?
Don't tempt me, don't tempt me.
Another one of the reasons that people don't want to purchase these, and these adjoining landowners don't, because they pay assessments. These, these lots are under restrictions, and they have to pay assessments for the roads, and they know if they buy it. It's just one more $500 assessment they've got to pay every year, so they'd rather not own it. And I, you know, even though we could reject the final bid, I would say that by approving this, we're probably approving to sell these lots for the amounts that we're in and into unless we want to keep them, which we've kept them, like Tommy said, long enough.
Yeah, I think so.
Way too long.
Yeah, this will get them back out. And this, this company, I guess, is a, is a builder, I think. I think I saw that, or I read it somewhere, that they're builders, so, from down east. So they're familiar with North Carolina property, so. And, you know, there's this movie, I forget the name of it, but Joe Pesci was in it, and he was a developer, and he said, "You buy, you only buy property when you have the four D's." And so it's death, disease, destitution, and divorce. So these guys are probably under the destitution D, and that's why they're buying it, because they're, they're developers. So y'all can remember that, if you want to develop property, to remember that. Those are the four clauses that, that he said you're supposed to use, so. Okay, anyway, I guess I just, but. Okay, so what, y'all want to, so we need to approve the offers for the purchasing contract on behalf of Coast to Coast Group LLC for the following county-owned properties. And if we won't, if we approve this, then the 10 days, I guess, will start at some point once the contract's signed by us, Frank, I guess.
When will that 10-day, when does the clock start running? When we advertise it, or?
No, you have to look at the statute. I haven't looked at it. There'll be a, there'll be an explicit, exact date. It might be triggered by signature, it might be triggered by a deposit. It's hard to say. You have to look at the exact, like, exactly track the statute in order to get good time.
It'll be in the next few days, so.
Yeah.
People watching this out there, if they were interested, they can drive to the properties and, and bid on them if they, if they so desire, and upset the bid. And usually what that does is it goes back and forth, and it does climb the bid. So we, we might, you know, they, they may sell for a lot more, and there may not be anybody bid. You know, that's, to me, that's probably the main, the chance of probably what it'll be, so. But if anybody wants to bid on these, you can do that, so, out, out there that's watching on TV. So can I entertain a, a motion to approve the offers? Can I just, all these candy, I guess? I mean, okay.
Can we do it collectively, is what you're asking? Can we collectively have one motion to approve all of these contracts?
I think, I would think so, since it's one buyer. It's not like it's different buyers, so.
All right, I'll, I'll move that we approve the offer to purchasing contracts, or the offers made by Coast to Coast Group LLC for lots one and six, section I of Hurricane Ridge, for the amount of $1,000. Lot six, section B of Hurricane Ridge, for the amount of $500. Lot 28, section N of Maggie Valley Country Club Estates, for $1,000. Point 77 acre on Soco Road, Maggie Valley, North Carolina, for $500. And lot 102 of Catalouche Mountain Estates, Waynesville, North Carolina, for the amount of $1,000.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
I would suggest maybe we amend that wording just a little bit, maybe request approval to start the process. The wording's a little ambiguous. It's almost like we're accepting those offers. I know we've discussed this at length, but maybe we could insert, request approval of offers to start the sale process. Would that satisfy everybody?
It's by state statute.
It is by state statute.
Yeah.
The process is, yeah.
Okay.
So we have to follow that.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that okay, Tommy?
That satisfies me. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is any other, any other discussion? Okay, okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay. Okay, thank you all. Okay, item number eight is the request approval of the appointment of James Rogers to the Town of Waynesville Planning Board as an ETJ, ETJ alternate. ETJ is extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rogers currently serves on the school board. I think he's been on in there for, sorry, I don't have the exact dates, but he's been born and raised in the Clyde area. He wants to continue to serve the town and, and help see growth through the increase in population that Haywood County is experiencing, and he just wants to be part of the thriving part of the growth.
Okay, Jimmy also serves on the, school board, yeah. Haywood County School Board. Okay, can I, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the appointment of James Rogers to the Town of Clyde Planning Board as an ETJ alternate.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, then number nine of new business is to, to support the polar plunge, is, you know, in, in the form of a donation. So it would be a quest from Haywood Waterways for the county to consider becoming a sponsor of the annual polar plunge fundraiser on February 2nd at Lake Junealuska. If, and if, if y'all would like to do that, we need to decide. The, the other towns have donated two, between two and $500, and they have different sponsorships. There's one called a $250 sponsorship, there's a $500 sponsorship, and there's a $1,000 sponsorship. And they're called, the $250 is called a stonefly, and the $500 is called a trout, and the $1,000 is a polar bear, is a presenting polar bear. What do y'all say for that? And this is, like, I think all the, right candy, all the towns have applied. Is there anyone here from Haywood Waterways? And it supports various education and water quality restoration projects, as well as the Kids in the Creek program. I've, I've donated personally to this. Usually I sponsor, somebody usually calls them, and I sponsor them personally. So I know it's a good, good project, especially the, the stream restoration. I know there was a stream, I think it was Hot Creek, and they helped restore it, and it was in, very much degraded, and they were able to help with that and get it cleaned up. And I, I know they do that a lot in the county, so.
Will, will this be taken out of the discretionary portion of the funds we set aside in the budget?
Yeah.
Have we made any distributions this year out of the discretionary funds?
We have. I don't know the exact dollar amount, but I know there's enough to cover this sitting in that fund right now.
Okay. I know we did the Santa Pal.
I don't know, whatever you guys say. I'm okay with $500.
Does the chairman and vice chairman have to go jump in the?
No, I'm assuming if we give money, we- No, I'm assuming if we give them money, we're, that we don't have to go jump, is what I'm assuming.
I think it'd be a good gesture.
To give the money or go jump?
Both.
You are representative on that too?
I've already done, I've already done my time, Kirk.
Certainly, I thought the legislative representative ought to be.
I think, I'm pretty sure that's right.
Okay.
They usually have a big crowd. I've been to it several years and they have a big crowd and it's a, it's a good thing.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so you want to?
I'll, I'll move that we donate or sponsor the amount of $500 to the Polar Plunge for Haywood County Waterways.
Okay, that's what I would have, if I, you know, that's what I would have recommended also. Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor designate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, is anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Okay.
You need to budget that?
That concludes our business portion of this and the next item would be a closed session for attorney-client privilege, 143, 31811A3, and I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor designate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, and we'll be in closed session when we get into the chambers in the back. Okay, we're back into, we, we just come out of closed session, we're back into open session. One, one comment I wanted to make on the Polar Plunge, Chris Boyd, our county planner, told me.
No, 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 sorry. I don't know what grades, no, no.
Do I?
Nothing, go ahead.
Do I need to start over?
No.
Okay. Our county planner had informed me that on the Polar Plunge that we can have, that they help benefit with septic tanks in our area. A lot of times people have a septic tank that needs to be repaired and they have made repairs on a lot of those tanks for people. And if anybody's never had a repair done, it's usually between $4,000 and $10,000 depending on what all they have to do, so. I, I, and, and he, when he said that, I, I remember that they've helped several residents. It's usually those that can't afford it to be able to put those systems in and, and keep the creeks clean. So I just wanted to make that comment. So does anybody have anything else to add to our?
I've got one thing to add, there's hardly anybody here, we're still out on television. Getting back to the opioid crisis, I, we met with a guy pretty familiar with the human, Health and Human Services and I will say in Raleigh that a lot of people approached the microphone to speak on that issue and they were all talking about how the family unit, how we really need to support the family unit and speak as leaders to support the family unit because this, this crisis, it affects children in a very bad way and for stability, stability in the home and stability there, leaders need to speak out to that issue and that goes a long way. Stand up and be heard for what's right, so I want to say that in closing.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, here and then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.